Okay. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 for the Joint Assembly Planning Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Okay, I'm going to do the Assembly and then on to the Planning Commission. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
George McKee. Robert Yount, are you on the phone?
Here.
Thank you. Moki Two.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Tam Bovee.
Here.
Mary Anderson will not be here, neither will Richard Allen. Patricia Chesbrough.
I'm here.
Colleen Baig.
Here.
Chris Elder.
Present.
Stafford Glashen will not be here. Sasan Musanan.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum of both bodies.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any changes to the agenda? Pretty simple agenda tonight. See it none. Agenda is approved as presented. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brown, why don't you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at audience participation. If you're testifying by phone and would like to speak under audience participation, please hit star three on your phone. You will hear your hand has been raised. You will know it as your turn to testify when you hear your line has been unmuted. And so, do we have any telephonics right now? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to the Assembly? Planning Commission? At least one of you, come on. All right, we'll close audience participation and we'll go to item. We're at our only item of business and we'll have Mr. Brown take over, or whoever's gonna. Okay.
Good evening, Assembly members and Planning Commission members. My name is Jason Ortiz. I'm the Acting Director for Planning and also the current Development Services Manager. I wanted to put out a couple pieces of information specifically for Assemblymember Hale and Yount, District One and Four. We're going to be having some openings on the Planning Commission coming up here, so keep that in mind if you have any people that you want to recommend or have them apply for those positions. And I have really not too much other information from me directly, but I do want to introduce Kim Sillian. She's the Planning Division Services Manager and she's going to be presenting here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Got my technology all set up here. Well, good evening. I'm Kim Sillian, the Planning Services Manager. I'm trying to calm myself down here because it was, we're very excited to be here and present at the Joint Planning Commission Assembly Meeting. But before we get started, we just wanted to say a couple thank yous and we have a couple gifts and we wanted to thank Mayor Halter for your 15 years of service. And we brought you some daffodils.
Wine.
You can plant them and then every spring, think about us.
I will, I will. I love this kind of stuff. Thank you very much. Fifty narcissus, that's amazing.
And Assemblymember McKee, we also want to thank you for your six years of service. We brought you some beautiful tulips, so you can plant them and think of us every spring. And Chairwoman Ba, thank you again for your six years of service on the Planning Commission. I can't say narcissus, but that's who we brought you. Thank you. And then have a thank you gift as well for Commissioner Anderson, but she's not here tonight.
Can I have Mr. McKee's tulips?
You want to trade? Is that me because I get loud and I get feedback from the computer? Okay. Well, with that, I just wanted to thank you all for your service. You've all been here with us for a long time and we really appreciate you and it's a pleasure to work for you. So I wanted to introduce the team. We have Ted Eischide with us tonight. He's a planner with the Borough. We have Lita Boris. She's not here. She's also a planner. We have Adam Bradway and Kelsey Anderson. So they'll all get up at some point during the presentation and talk about some of the projects that they're working on. As we go through the presentation, they'll introduce themselves a little bit more. We also have two vacancies. We're still trying to fill our admin position. We've made offers. Hopefully that will happen soon. And then we're still trying to hire for a temporary planner wanting to offer support. So tonight, just to give an overview of what we're going to talk about, I wanted to first start about the, talk about the planning context and how we show up for work every day and what we understand our job to be for you as the Planning Division. We're going to go overview all the current projects that we're working on right now, talk a little bit about next steps and take time for questions if you have any after that. So, and Kelsey is going to click for me because I couldn't get the technology to work, to have both screens going, so I apologize for the delay in that. So I thought we'd start first with planning powers. And I'm new, as many of you know, two years new to working for local government. I came from a long, long career in nonprofit work. And so, thinking about the Borough as a government and what we're supposed to do and how we're supposed to serve the community, I didn't realize that the state granted us a few mandatory powers. One of them was education, providing for education. The other is to assess properties and tax, so we have a revenue stream. The other is planning and providing land use regulations. So what does that mean? So Alaska is one of the only states that has land, natural resource management in the Constitution, and they wrote a number of specific articles that speak specifically to planning for land use and structuring how land can be used in an area. And they did that, the founders did that because they knew that we were such a resource-rich state and we were growing. It was really important to specifically call that natural resource management out. So if land use planning is one of our, and land use regulation is one of our mandatory powers, how do you all as our policymakers decide what regulations to put forward, how to guide growth and development, how to provide for all those services that our communities need? If we look at our strategic plan that you just passed in February of this year, the Borough vision is to be the community of choice for work and play and for where people are going to live. So how do we become that? Planning has a lot to do with it. So those specific powers that are statutes that the state called out provide that guidance for planning. So one of the things they said as a, you know, a Borough, you have to have a Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission has to adopt a comprehensive plan and then Assembly and Planning Commission, as you move regulations forward and produce rules and guidelines about how land can be used in the community to support services, it has to flow from the comprehensive plan. So things would have had to have been identified in the comp plan to then be supported in code. So if we think about that, it's like where do our neighborhoods go? Where do all our roads go? How big should the roads be? Where should our public infrastructure go? Where should businesses be located? These are all the things that we talk about in some of the plans that we work on. So we don't just have, because the comprehensive plan is really important, it's like the overarching plan that guides all the other planning work that we do. It's heavily informed by the community. It's made up of policy statements, goals, recommendations, maps for, like I said, how land can be used. And that's like the top tier of plans. So if any of you are Lord of the Ring fans, it's like the one ring that rules them all. And then there's all those other rings that control all the other worlds. So with our comprehensive plan, we also have nesting plans, like our long-range transportation plan, a bike and pedestrian plan that would flow from that, and then school walking routes that would also flow from that. So they're nested. I don't know if I already said it, but we have written as a planning department, more than 100 plans. They all have their own lifecycle. Some of them are only written for one time and they don't need to be redone. And then others have a five, 10, and 20-year lifespan depending on the issues that are happening in the community. So in our little division, we have a couple boundaries and guidelines that guide our work, so how we show up every day. And that is the mission that we live by and then your strategic plan that you created. And so the mission, we believe our mission is to develop plans, studies, and reports that provide you guidance on how land could and should be used and what regulations you might want to adopt to support community growth. So we protect quality of life and that's the main code of ethics. Like every plan that we work on, every time we're engaging the community to talk about a specific issue, it's all looking at what does quality of life mean to people and how can we make sure that the research, the reports that we're writing are giving guidance to protect that, to enhance that, to support that. So like I said, public outreach is our main tool. We're constantly asking the community what quality of life means to them and what their needs are for infrastructure and services. For some people, it means access to natural resources. For other people, it means fish, salmon, and moose in their freezer. For other people, it means close-to-home jobs. Other people, it means affordable housing. For some people, it's safety. For some people, it's access to those recreational lands. So all the plans that we're working on are touching these quality-of-life aspects that we're supporting. The other boundary that guides our division is your strategic plan. And as you all know, our population is growing. In the last 10 years, we've grown by nearly 20%. Like that's a huge jump in population every so many years. So because we're growing so fast, some of the things you identified in the strategic plan in terms of threats to quality of life, to becoming the most, the community of choice for people to live and work and play are some of those issues that happen when land use isn't managed. There's conflicts. It's unmanaged growth, decline in fisheries, increased land use conflicts, hazards, and a mistrust in local government. We definitely see that. So why bring those things up? They're identified in your SWOT. A lot of the things that we're working on could alleviate some of the conflicts, could promote economic development, and could enhance that quality of life. So I guess at this point in the presentation, we're going to start transitioning to all those projects and plans that we're working on that do address the things I just talked about. But I wanted to highlight the lifecycle of a plan first to kind of give you an idea of what we're doing behind the scenes before a plan shows up before you as a draft document. So really, the step one of starting a plan, a report or a study is a need has been identified, either by administration or one of you or a community member, and then, or it's been identified in the strategic plan. And then we take that issue up, go do our own research, understand what the best practices are, kind of get a better sense of what the problem or conflict is, and then we go out to the public and have more conversations about, this is the issue that we're trying to deal with. A lot of our subdivisions that are growing are congested. We're having issues with traffic. We don't have enough minor and major arterial connectors getting out to the arterials. We need more roads. We would talk to the public, is that really an issue? Step four would be we would draft a plan. We'd come up with some ideas on how to alleviate that issue. Then we would bring the plan back to our boards and commissions to review. Did we get it right? Did the solutions we come up with, would they address the need? Then we would bring it back to all of you for public hearings and additional public comment. We'd make those edits and changes. Then the plan gets adopted and then ideally it gets implemented and then reviewed in its own lifecycle. So that's kind of like, I wanted to show kind of where we're coming from when we come to you with a plan. Lots of research and thought and community engagement has taken place before it ever gets to a final document because we really want these plans to be seen by you as living documents that we've done the research, we've engaged the community, and then you can trust the work and use it as you're making your decisions. So many of you have been here for a while and you've heard our division talk about needing to update the Borough-wide Comprehensive Plan. And we have not been able to launch that project. I think the, a resolution was passed by the Assembly maybe nearly four years ago, asking us, and the Planning Commission, asking us to update the Comprehensive Plan. Our community does not look like it did in 2005. We have so much more population, so much more infrastructure, just so much more happening in our community. The visions, values, goals, and policy statements in the old plan don't match. So we finally are fully staffed, well, except for the two positions that we don't have, but we have a whole team of planners now, which is what we haven't had for at least the two years since I've been here. So we've been actively meeting as a team on a weekly basis, talking about the Comprehensive Plan, trying to come up with an idea of how we're going to tackle such a big project because our Borough is so big, because it's so diverse. So the first step we've decided is to do a community survey, kind of take the community's temperature. What are the issues that you're facing in your community? What are the needs that you have? Where are the conflicts happening? What would you like for services to be provided from the Borough? Once we get that survey back, we feel like there'll be a number of themes that rise to the top and then we'll be able to develop a work plan and put ourselves on the planned lifecycle track to start doing more community engagement and start drafting chapters of the plan. So hopefully in the spring, we'll be able to come back to you with the results of the initial community survey in terms of what community needs are and a work plan for what we're going to focus on to have those additional conversations to begin drafting the plan. So Glacier View Community Council, they have requested that we update their Comprehensive Plan. They updated, or they created their plan, I think in 2010. So it's been about 10 years since they did their comp plan, their subarea plan for the Sheep Mountain area, and implemented a spud. And so they reached out to us and said that they would like us to review with them the plan to make sure it still matches what's happening in their community. So we're just at the beginning stages. We're about to reach out, send a public notification to every single member in the community, letting them know that the council has asked to update this plan. And then we'll move forward with the process, revisiting the chapters to make sure they're relevant. So start out with the two plans, the two Comprehensive Plans, because those are the overarching plans. But now I want to pass the mic to some of our team members to talk about some of the projects that they're working on. And then I'll let, have Adam come up first and have him talk about some of the projects that he's working on, introduce himself a little bit more. And yeah, Adam, come on up.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Adam Bradway. I've been a planner with the Borough for about three and a half years now, and I've been in front of you, almost all of you, a handful of times. But this is a good opportunity to reintroduce myself and hopefully put a face to some of the projects that I've been working on. So if you have questions about anything, you feel free to contact me and ask more about it and learn more about it. So my projects range, but a lot of the work I do is within transportation. I also have been working recently with the Matsui Borough School District on a few projects. And then completely different side of things, I work with the Historical Preservation Commission and do historical preservation. So some of the projects that I've been working on, the long-range transportation plan was on one of the slides earlier. And in terms of transportation-related plans, it's sort of the big one. It is where a lot of the community goals and needs for transportation are housed and all the other transportation-related plans should flow out of that. It was last updated in 2017, so a lot of it is still really good, but it has short, mid, and long-term goals. And a lot of those projects are being worked on. And a lot of them actually were in the transportation bond package that will be going to the voters here soon. So we're going to be updating it soon to update some of the projects and go through and cross off the list some of those ones that we completed. So if the long-range transportation plan was the big plan, the official streets and highways plan is one of those plans that flows out of it. For the most part, it is a map of the road projects that are in the long-range transportation plan. It shows geographically the needs of the Borough's road system based on population growth. It takes in the projects that are in the LRTP, but also does, you know, growth projections and modeling to sort of get a good idea of where the Borough is growing and where the needs are. One of the key parts of this particular plan is that it also lays out some of those needed connections that the Borough is in need of a lot of those collector-level roads to bridge different communities and subdivisions. And so this helps us when we go through the plating process to sort of protect some of those really important corridors so that we, when we go to build out the Borough, we're taking into account where roads should go. And moving down the chain from the official streets and highways plan, the image there is actually from the 2021 Official Streets and Highways Plan update. I forgot to mention that that should be coming in front of you all in the next handful of months, sometime this winter, for public comments related to the Official Streets and Highways Plan. Something that then would flow out of that plan would be a more distinct study on a specific area. We're calling them corridor studies, although a lot of these are not specifically corridors. We've identified a few key areas that are growing particularly fast in the Borough. This is all coming from federal earmark funds that are passed down from DOT, and they're asking us to take a closer look at some of these areas like Fish Hook, like the Hollywood area, like Bogart-Selden, that are seeing particular needs for new access and fixing some of those transportation issues. So these corridor studies are going to do a deep dive into where the needs are for those particular areas. And then it's going to come out with sort of a better prioritization, some more planning-level cost analysis, and sort of key intersections to preserve in terms of those particular areas. Switching off the long-range transportation plan, this is not exactly a project, but I wanted to let you all know that municipalities, utility companies, and others in the state have been meeting regularly to discuss the impact that electrical vehicles will have on all of our systems. And so I have been participating in some of those conversations, learning more about how EVs will impact, learning about opportunities. You know, there's a huge lack in infrastructure for charging. And so if there are opportunities in the future, I'll be up to speed to be able to bring them to you and let you know more about Another school and transportation-related project, at a previous joint PC Assembly meeting, I spoke a little bit more in depth about this, but we've been going through and scoring the walkability around our Borough schools. This all came from the Surb Meridian Project. We were doing this to have a systematic way of showing where our schools are walkable and where they're not. And it helps us to prioritize which pedestrian project should come first. And yeah, it's, we've done about 10 schools so far and we're slowly working through all of them, about one a month. And now to completely switch gears to historic preservation. So I am staffed to the Borough's Historical Preservation Commission. We used to have a full-time cultural resource person in cultural resource division here and we don't anymore. We do have a dedicated group of volunteers that meet and discuss these topics, but because we don't have a cultural resource division here anymore, updating our historic preservation plan, which was last done in 1987, is really important to help give some direction to how that program is run and use our resources well to accommodate preserving our Borough's diverse history while also seeing that the Borough is growing really rapidly. So this plan is funded in part by grants from the State Office of History and Archaeology and helps to give us some idea of where we're going. I think that's it for me. I may or may not be around for questions, but my contact information will be around if you have any more specifics about the, any of the projects that I discussed. So, thank you. And my coworker, Kelsey Anderson, will come up and speak next.
Thanks. Hello, everyone. My name is Kelsey Anderson. I am the newest member of the planning team, so I probably do not look very familiar to any of you. Before coming to the Borough, I was working for the Department of Natural Resources, doing more natural resource land use planning. So I'm really excited to be able to bring that kind of experience to the Borough. And yeah, I'm just really enjoying doing the work that we're able to do here. So, oh, I only have three projects that I'm going to go over, so my time with you is short but sweet. The first is the bike and pedestrian plan. So as Adam touched on, that long-range transportation plan is the major player as far as what dictates all the other. all the other transportation plans that we're doing in our division. So the bike and pedestrian plan is essentially a chapter of the long-range transportation plan, and it also fits in really nicely with the work that Adam's doing with the safe routes to school, because as we know, it takes those separated pathways and those walkable streets to get people safely to and from schools. So one thing we saw out of the Transportation 21 public outreach that we did was that separated pathways and more connectivity for trails and bike routes is actually a pretty big priority for Borough residents. So as the Borough starts to update its roads and to modernize roadways, we just want to make sure that we're also planning for other modes of transportation, such as biking and walking. So we've recently submitted a scope of work for this plan to begin the procurement process. We'll be going over those bids this fall. We are looking to find a consultant that's going to be able to help us develop a prioritized list of infrastructure needs for the Borough to increase connectivity between not only urban areas, but we also want to reach into those recreation areas as well as into the backcountry. So that's going to be the main focus of the bike and pedestrian plan. The other side of that is going to be an implementation plan. So we're asking the consultant to help us figure out those planning-level costs and the expectations of the burden that the Borough can consider as we are moving through and checking off these different priorities for bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Right, my next two are not really plans at all, they're more so updating processes. So I'm sure some of you remember, last year, the former planning director brought up an idea to update the lake management process, and that was not met with a lot of warmth, I shall say, from the community. So we have listened to what the community has said, and we are recognizing just how much lakes mean to people, and being able to use them the way they want them is really important. So at this point, we are not really even looking to update this process. We actually kind of, a lake management plan fell into our lap with Beverly Lake, so I've been working with some community members from that lake who are hoping to get a lake management plan for their community. These plans are just like as grassroots as you can get with the plans that we do. So the Borough doesn't even do anything with them until 50% of those lakeside residents sign a petition saying that they want a lake management plan. So I'm working with those community members to see if they have the right numbers for us to begin that process, and we're kind of using it as a case study to see, like, we don't want to fix something if it's not broken. So if the code works the way that it is written right now, we're going to keep it and we're just going to move forward. If we notice in this process with Beverly Lake that we could increase efficiency somewhere and maybe get feedback from the public saying that, like, they didn't really like how the process worked, then we'll move forward with figuring something else out. But for right now, we're just working with a couple of different communities to see if they can get a lake management plan going. And then finally, the capital improvement program. So also, I'm sure that some of you remember that this last March, there was a lot of conversations before the adoption of the CIP, kind of people wondering, like, whose priorities are these? Where do the priorities come from? Are they all from the communities or these departments as well? And it's a really confusing process, and it has been for a very long time. So what I've been working on is a lot of research. I've been looking into the history of what the CIP has been for the Borough since it started in, I believe, 1965, and what other communities and counties are doing across the US with their CIPs. And what I found is that it's a budgeting tool. It's used for municipalities to prioritize community lists and influence the capital budget, to allow community members to speak to what they want to see done in their communities. So I've been working a lot with Kim and Alex, Manager Brown, and a lot of other staff around the Borough to see what we can actually make of this list to make sure that it is a prioritized, useful, strategic tool that the community has some input in for capital projects. So right now, I'm currently updating the scoring criteria, and we're just kind of figuring out and trying to define what capital improvements is so that we can have a very rigorous screening process, get a much smaller list, like, gone are the days of 400 projects in a CIP. We want to get it down to 1015 to kind of like work towards building that community trust and showing the community that if you nominate a project and it falls within the powers of the Borough to complete, we're going to do what we can to have that kind of influence the capital budget and maybe get some of these projects taken care of for community members. So I'm sure that you'll be seeing more of this as we go into the next CIP nomination period in fiscal year 2023. That's all I have for you. I believe Kim's going to come back up.
Okay, another plan that we're working on is actually one of LITA's plans, is the Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan. And what this plan is, it really looks at, works with transit providers and health and social service providers to assess what are the public transit needs of our most needed population, folks that don't drive or can't drive, people that don't have licenses, really depend on that public transportation service to get to appointments, to get to work, to get to classes. So this plan identifies what all the needs are and how public transit could be improved for that population, and it needs to be updated every five years. So we're in that cycle. The plan needs to be updated next year. One of the key issues with this plan is that many of our transit providers get federal funding to provide public transit services to the population, and if we, the Borough, don't do this plan and work with providers to identify what those barriers are to public transit to that population, they can't get the funding. So we'll be working on this plan with the, I think there's 18 transit providers across the Borough to get public input on this plan and get that updated so they qualify for those federal dollars to continue to provide that service. One of the outcomes of the Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan from the last round of the plan was that finding a ride, engaging in public transit was confusing for Borough residents because we have so many providers. Nobody knew, and we don't have regular bus routes because our community's so spread out, our transit service works on call and response. And so if you live in Glacier View, who do you call to get a bus ride? Well, you could call Chickaloon Native Village, they operate a transit program that's both for tribal members and the rest of the population, so you could schedule a ride for them. Or if you live in Talkeetna, you could call Sunshine. Or if you lived in Willow, maybe you're not sure who you might call. So we have been working with Valley Transit, Sunshine Transit, Chickaloon Transit, and Matsui Senior Services to come up with a coordinated dispatch service. So there's one website and one phone number, so no matter where you live in the valley and you need to coordinate a ride service, you just call that one service, and then the ride is scheduled and dispatched. And so we're partnering with Valley Transit to provide that one-call, one-click service for the other providers. We're doing beta testing right now, and so we hope in January the system will go live, and then folks can be using that throughout the Borough. We have a one-year of grant funding and a possible commitment from Matsui Health Foundation if we need an additional year of funding to continue to support, like, the upkeep of the software and the service, and then we think it'll be able to be funded through federal transit authority dollars. So that's really a nice outcome of what a plan then could lead to, to provide service in the community. I wanted to touch briefly on the development of the pre-MPO and hopefully future MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So as any of you know, with the possible designation of a portion of the core area being considered urbanized because our population is so dense, that urbanized designation comes with additional federal requirements, and one of them is that we need to form an MPO. An MPO basically is a transportation planning organization that's separate from all the governments and stakeholders within the transportation arena, but it's part of them. So it's a little bit confusing, so I like to think about it like a nonprofit organization, but its membership would be the Matsui Borough, the Cities of Palmer and Wassila, DOT, Chickaloon Native Village, Connect Tribe, transit providers, and bike and ped advocates. So over the course of the last year, we've been meeting as organization staff to get up to speed on what this MPO is, how are we going to form it, what are all the requirements? And we've just started hosting pre-policy board meetings with organization leadership from all the organizations that I mentioned. And the reason we've initiated the pre-policy board is that the steering committee is developing documents that they need to have approved by leadership, and these documents that we're creating are part of this operating agreement that if in April 2022, the Borough gets an urbanized area designation for the core area, we'll have a year to submit these documents to the governor, and the governor will form our MPO. So we're really digging in hard for this next year to get all those documents together. There was a lot of question on whether or not we were going to meet the urbanized area designation because the census is changing how they calculate urbanized areas, or at least they said they were going to. They proposed counting dwelling units instead of population, and so to get the urbanized area designation, if they count dwelling units, we'd need 385 dwelling units per square mile in a contiguous area that equals 50,000 or greater. And so the map that you're looking at, all the bright little red dots are all the dwelling units from our latest assessments data. So from our calculations, we believe there are about 458, I think it is, dwelling units per square mile in that area. If we go straight population from the census to designate urbanized area, we're already at 60,000 in the core area. So we feel pretty confident that we're going to get the designation based on those latest census results and this GIS task that we did. And also because of that, we've been talking regularly with DOT. It's their responsibility to help the Matsui Borough region form the MPO. They don't have to give us any money to do that, but they have been funding us over the past two years to provide, for us to get consulting support to help us work through this process. They're going to grant us an additional $100,000 this year to potentially hire a person to be in charge of helping with the formation and getting all those documents together. But I'll come back at another meeting once that legislation comes through to give more detailed report on the MPO, but I think it's going really well, so that feels really positive. Okay, so I'm going to switch, and no? Oh, I'm going to switch and invite Ted up to talk about some of the projects that he's working on. He shook and said no, and I turned around like, oh, God, I'm in the wrong part of the presentation.
Thank you for having us this evening, everyone. My name is Ted Ischeid, and I'm a planner, and an interesting tidbit to feed off what Kelsey said, she said she's the newest planner in the division. Well, I'm the oldest planner. So literally and figuratively, this Saturday will be my fourth year anniversary as a planner. So we have a very young division, I like to say. So I get to talk about what I do for the next few slides, which is going to be water, fish, air, plans, and people. So you can grade me and see how I did there. Water, fish, air, plans, and people. And the first thing, let me talk about water a little bit. I need to take a drink here, excuse me. Excuse me. When I take that drink of water, you know, I kind of count, I can't really see it, but I assume when it goes through my lips down my throat, it's going to be clean. I assume when I want to fill this up, I have water to fill up. And we're pretty blessed here in the Matsui Borough, we have a lot of water. But if you look at this image here, sometimes we end up with water places we don't want it, and I could be very thirsty, but my intuition kind of indicates I wouldn't want to drink that water. I am a dog owner, and I love to walk my dogs, and one's a Labrador, and they like to drink water as well and swim in it, and every time my Stella goes by one of these puddles on the street and tries to drink it, I say, no, that's bad water. So we intuitively have that view. So that brings me to, I can't see the arrow. There we go. A project that I've fairly recently started working on, and that would be the, let me do something here, the MS4 Stormwater Program. So, you know, a little history here, in 2013, the Assembly adopted a Matsui Borough Stormwater Management Plan. It's one of those specialty plans, and that was essentially planning for the future where we would be an urbanized area, and as Kim just said, we're probably going to be there. And one of the requirements of being an urbanized area is you must now start managing your stormwater, that water that runs off from storm events, precipitation, snow melt, so on and so forth. And because we are, you know, very famously Alaska's fastest-developing area, we have a lot of hard surfaces that produce a lot of runoff. And so right now, we are doing some work, looking at reinstating a stakeholder group and starting to go through the preparation program for, again, our urbanized area designation. If that does happen, then what that means is in April, we're designated shortly after that, this would be April of '22, shortly after that, the DEC sends us a letter saying, yeah, you now have to manage your stormwater under the Clean Water Act, and so you have six months essentially to kind of get with the program. After that six months, they will issue us a permit, a five-year permit, and then we start managing our stormwater. And it does involve some best management practices, but it does also involve a lot of local input, showing that we are making efforts to manage our stormwater. And the payoff, and again, we're going to be working with, you know, partners in the urbanized area, Palmer, Wassila, so on and forth, this is not just the Borough. But, you know, one of the payoffs of it is essentially we help preserve that quality of life that people here enjoy in the Matsui, and it means the water that's going into our streams and lakes is cleaner, hopefully soaking into the ground, recharging those aquifers. So let's go to fish. Maybe. There we go. So I also work a bit with Matsui Fisheries, most notably with our Matsui Borough Fish and Wildlife Commission, which two members of the Assembly here are on, which I guess means it's an important commission, I'd like to think. And the Fish and Wildlife Commission, as you know, is a pretty active group. It's composed of eight people, many of them are expert in their field, and as I found in my time here in the Borough, fish are pretty important here, and I've been pleased working with the Fish and Wildlife Commission. We just had our first meeting in September after the summer break because I got to take time off to go fishing, right? And, you know, part of it was talking about how did the fishing season go? We had the Alaska Department of Fishing Game there, commercial and sport fish, giving us a low review, and the general consensus was, you know, the fishing season wasn't too bad. Yeah, the king salmon returns aren't there, but that seems to be a bigger issue. But, you know, the fishing returns weren't too bad. And I actually got to participate in a personal use fishery on the Susitna River in July. And all that came about, a lot of that stuff came about because of the Fish and Wildlife Commission working with the Board of Fisheries in 2020. They actually, working with the Board of Fisheries, created the Conservation Corridor concept in 2014, and it seems to be working. So, you know, the things that really matter to people, water, fish, the Fish and Wildlife Commission's had a hand in. Also, the Borough is a member of the Matsui Basin Salmon Habitat Partnership, which works with various fisheries habitat and research studies. And kind of related to that, I actually serve as the local government representative on the National Fish Habitat Partnership Board, again, trying to bring a local perspective to the 20 national, or Fish Habitat Partnerships, one of which is located here locally. And to me, local government means close to the people, making And to me, local government means close to the people, making it easy to do work that benefits fisheries for people. Okay, so I'm on the third of the five letters, air. I also work a bit with air quality. And air quality kind of fits with the health and quality of life planks of the comprehensive plan. And just a little review, here in the winter that we just finished, 2021, we had two days where the one single air quality monitor that the state runs in the Butte, we had two days that violate the 24-hour standard for fine particulate matter. So it wasn't a bad winter, I guess, in that respect. Another interesting part of the air quality program is the Department of Environmental Conservation has had complaints from many neighbors in the Butte where that air quality monitor is located. It's on Harrison Court. So they're starting year two of a study to possibly relocate it to somewhere else in the Butte. It's not an easy process. They have to collect a lot of data and they have to convince the EPA, but they have been responsive to concerns, which I applaud them for. Okay, now I get to plans. I'm almost there. So one of the things that Kim highlighted was, you know, a part of plans is actually having an implementation plan. You don't want to just have a plan that just sits there. And one way that plans can be implemented is in our plat reviews. So the Plating Division is in the Planning Department. And when someone wants to do a development, we get a series of people, including the Plating Division, get a chance to look at it and make comments on it. And what we simply do is we look at adopted plans and we make comments on the development. Is there any issues with code? And are there any parts of a plan that pertain to this as recommendations? So it's a way that makes planning actually alive because many people don't know these plans exist. But if you go through a plat review, you will. Because we were actually, you know, say, well, this is what this community values as indicated in this adopted plan. One more. People? Yes, boards and commissions. So the Planning Department Division staffs many boards and commissions. And the really important thing about these boards and commissions is they are volunteers, oftentimes with incredible expertise. And they are a system bottom up for which to bring issues to your attention, for which to bring their expertise to bear, their recommendations. They oftentimes have a chance to modify proposals. And so these many boards and commissions are really an important part of local government. They give the public greater opportunity to have input and they help you do your job. And so I just want to point out that all the plans that have ever been adopted or will come your way will go through these various boards and commissions. So you won't be the first one seeing them. The Plating Commission is very important in that. And I guess I would just like to end, I think I get an A for all the letters. You always make sure when you assign homework to yourself that you can do it. But I would like to say, I do really want to thank you as commissioners and Assembly people. I've done some of that work and I feel it's very, very important. And I just want to say thank you for listening. And is Toni Boothby on the phone, perchance? She's not, so I'm going to turn this over to my supervisor.
Okay, I seem to move these slides. So I just wanted to quickly mention the 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Toni Boothby is another planner, works in current planning. She actually worked on this plan. And I just wanted to bring it up because we developed this plan after the 2018 earthquake. And one of the things we realized that we didn't have access to a lot of FEMA funds because we hadn't looked at all the possible hazards that could happen across the borough and had a plan to mitigate those hazards. So this plan was developed and now we have the ability to access more funding to focus on mitigation. So the graphic here shows for every dollar we spend on mitigation, it saves $6 in future disaster losses that we'd have to pay for. So this access to funding that we now have, because we have this plan, we can use it to apply for grants, to get more dykes, to prevent flooding from happening in communities. We can build additional bridges to create additional outlets for communities that only have one way in and one way out. We can support firewise programs. We can study other areas that have higher flood risk and maybe limit development that happens there. So I just wanted to nod that we have this plan and now it helps us access additional funding. I think in 2018, we were able to get almost $4 million to help buy out some of the homeowners that lived along the Matanuska River because of the potential for flooding and those losses. So I think it's, I don't know, it's not my plan, so I don't know a lot. I don't know what else to say about it, but that it's important. And I'll talk a little bit later about award that we got when we went through developing this plan. Lita's not here tonight, so she's the main planner that's supporting Arctic Winter Games. I just wanted to thank you all for offering to let the borough host Arctic Winter Games and providing so much support for it. We have a fully built out board. We've had our first board meeting. We have our second board meeting tomorrow night. We have offered a position to the general manager. So now we have actual staff as part of the host society to start working in the board, to develop the plan, to implement the games. And we're very close on finalizing the host agreement with the International Committee and Matsu Borough and the grant agreement. So we can transfer some of the funds that you provided to support the games and some of the funds that were provided by the state to support the games. So everything's feeling really positive. Our meetings are open if anyone wanted to join. It's tomorrow afternoon here in the Assembly Chambers and it's on Zoom. So just reach out to me and I can send you the link. I think it's probably also on the calendar in the Clerk's Office. So one thing I wanted to, one of the new things, so we're in the tail end of the presentation and I'm feeling really excited that it's, we might be under an hour, like I said, so that's really exciting. So one of the things that I've realized and we've realized as we start talking about all the plans and all the projects that we're working on is the community doesn't know about all this really cool work that we're doing. You know, some communities might know if we're working directly with them, but the whole community doesn't know. We also, because of COVID, haven't been attending as many community council meetings as we used to. We all, we did, we're frequent flyers at many community council meetings over the years, but with COVID, things have changed. So we decided to put together a electronic newsletter that we'll put out quarterly that just highlights some of these plans and projects that we're working on, gives people an idea of what the project is, how they could get involved, where to find more resources. So we're about to send out our second Planner Platform. We have a copy somewhere if anyone wants to see it. We're going to sign you all up for it because we know you want to be on the mailing list. You can unsubscribe if you decide that you don't want to be on it. But we, again, we originally wanted to just have it for community councils to like have that communication. But every time we talk about it, people are like, oh, sign us up. Or I want to get on that list, or how do I get on the list? So we're trying to figure out how to get more people signed up so they can stay connected with the projects that we're working on that they care about. So I just want to give a little nod to celebrating some of the successes we've had over this past year. Want to start with Transportation 21, though none of us that are here now worked on the long-range transportation plan. Like we worked with Public Works to come up with the project lists that you reviewed and eventually approved. And then with that, we worked with GIS to do this big public outreach initiative to see what the community thought about the possibility of going to bond to do these transportation projects. And so we had about 8,000 community members engage on the website. And that is a huge, that's a lot of people. That, we don't often get that many people engaged in some of the projects that we're doing. So I just want to highlight that we're trying to do new things to make sure that the whole community knows what we're working on and can give their opinion. We also got, I think, close to 140 really good comments about all the projects. So that's also a win. Like I said before, the Hazard Mitigation Plan got an award from the Alaska Planning Association, I think, and from FEMA, related to the public outreach that they did. Their plan was going through the public hearing process and public comment process, and then COVID shut everything down, so they couldn't do any open houses like they'd planned. So they did it all virtually. They had about 800 comments. I mentioned the Planner Platform. We started with about 30 members from all the community councils. And now we're up to about 100 people subscribing. And once I add all of you, it'll be even more, so it's very exciting for me. We also have seen our, we've been trying to be more engaging on Facebook again because that's how the community is engaging. Most people are looking at social media to get their information. And so we're trying to be more savvy about how we put information out. So in 2020, we had about, what is it, 320 members? And now we're up to 717. So I think that's positive. We're putting information out there that people are interested in. They're liking our page and they're engaging us in a different way. And then lastly, because of COVID, most public meetings now are also virtual. So because the borough is so big, it'd be hard to go to every public meeting or rotary or chamber because there just isn't enough time. But we've started going to more virtual meetings and doing presentations, similar to the one that we've given you tonight, trying to give people the broad brushstrokes of all the projects that we're working on and inviting them to participate. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. So just a couple more slides. Next steps. So we've talked about a lot of projects. We wanted to stay kind of high level, but we wanted to make, kind of give you the scope of all the things this tiny little team is working on. So you just had more connection to it and knew who to reach out to if you had additional questions. I don't know if any of you have been in Director Strawn's office, but this is his bookshelf and we like to call it the place that plans go to die. Often we develop a plan, we work really hard for, on it. We get all this public comment, we go through public hearings, it gets adopted and gets put on the shelf. And then what? Nothing. And so we're trying to make some changes. Like I said before, like our plans are really developed in partnership with the community and all of you. They're meant to be living documents. They're meant to be enacted. And so one of the things you can expect in the near future is that all of our plans are going to come with an implementation plan. So there'll be the plan, all the research, the guidelines, the policy statements, the maps, the opinions about what we think needs to happen with this particular issue. And then there'll be a final chapter that talks about if we wanted to enact this plan, these are all the things you could do as policymakers to make this plan come alive. And then as a follow-up, after the plan is adopted, we'll come back with legislation asking if you would like us to move forward on any of the recommendations on the plan that you just adopted. So that really gives us direction to keep driving. So the plan, all this hard work and all this feedback and all this information that goes into developing the plan and adopting the plan, doesn't just go on the bookshelf and die. It stays alive. It gets enacted through an additional process. So with that, I know we said a lot of things. There are probably a couple minutes left for questions, if anybody has any. We have, there's a handout in your packet, has all of our pictures on it and our contact information and the list of all the projects that we're working on. If you want additional information about any of those projects, I encourage you to reach out. And yeah, it was a real, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to the joint bodies of the Planning Commission and Assembly. And yeah, we'll be here for a little while to take any questions.
Mr. Sumner, I think, wants to lead on.
Yep, through the mayor, I had a couple of questions. First, what time tomorrow is that, Arctic Winter Games?
I think it's three to five.
Three to five?
I can look on my phone and I can send you an email after the meeting.
Okay, that'd be perfect. And then it says in the packet here, there's six requirements in the MS4 stormwater permit. What are those?
So. Yeah, and Ted can help me if I don't get them right. So public participation, we need to make sure that we're, our public education. We need to make sure the community knows about the MS4 permit and how to prevent, how to keep stormwater from ending up into our lakes and river bodies. There needs to be public participation. Number two, meaning we and other local governments and DOT need to be actively designing our projects with stormwater in mind so that runoff isn't going into the water bodies. We need to, like, we're probably going to have to enact the land use permit or development permit because we need to now look at the development that's happening on the landscape within the urbanized area to know, are they building a parking lot? How big is the impervious surface going to be? If there's a storm event during construction, is there going to be runoff? What are the, how are they going to prevent that? Once the project is completed, is there going to be runoff? How are we going to prevent that stormwater from going into a water body? We're also probably going to need, we have to map all the illicit discharge. So everywhere in the borough where runoff is already happening, not everywhere in the borough, but within the core area where runoff is happening, we need to identify where that is and come up with a mitigation plan to deal with it. We also need to have folks go out on the landscape once we get the permit and approve someone's development and certify that they are managing the silt and stormwater runoff. We need to go check up on them to make sure while they're doing construction, they have put in the silt management measures and coy logs and whatever else. And then we have to have someone do post-construction once it's final to make sure all the measures have been taken to protect stormwater. Did I get them all? Okay, so it's significant. It, we're going to, I think, need possibly another engineer on staff, possibly someone, another, someone else at the permit counter. And then partnerships with the two cities and DOT to like engage on that community education and that participation piece. So we're all modeling how to do it and then supporting our developers and property owners to make the best choices. So if we don't meet all the requirements of the permit, we risk losing all of our federal funding. So we like have to do it. And they don't like, unlike the MPO, we'll get funding to manage the MPO and do all the plans. The MS4 is unfunded. So we have to come up with new revenue streams to come up with those new staff and those new permits and the new process to handle it. So it's big.
Keep going.
Yeah, so I'm hearing that we'll have to be monitoring people's compliance with SWIP permits? And, or something beyond that?
So it's a separate from the state SWIP process. It's a separate permit that, so this is going to exceed my range of knowledge of how to comply with the permit at this process. But yeah, we'll, we'll need to be monitoring the applicants who come forward to do development during construction and post-construction to make sure. Yeah.
Sorry. So on a SWIP permit, right, there's a notice of termination and a closeout date. Would this have a closeout date or would this be monitoring sort of forever?
So I think, yes, I think now that you say, I think it would have a closeout date. If they designed whatever they designed the way they said they were going to and it met our requirements for managing stormwater, then the project lives. We don't have to keep going back to check on it. But I don't like, I couldn't say for sure. I wish Mike Campfield was here. He could probably answer that question. But that's why we're going to form a steering committee. We're going to get folks from every single, like all Public Works and Land Management and our division, folks from the state. We've been talking with Fairbanks and Anchorage who have MS4 programs. Their MS4 managers are going to start sitting in on our steering committee meetings. We're going to figure out, okay, how do we manage this? What are the systems that we need in place? How are you all doing your process? Knowing that Anchorage is a little bit different because they're much bigger and they have sewer system and we don't, or storm system and we don't.
Ms. Dowers?
Thank you. You're going to love me. I also have a stormwater question. Because I know Palmer has had some incidents where they've really struggled and, you know, unusual amount of runoff there. Would it require you to collect stormwater? And I guess I'm thinking that their, you know, sewage treatment, if it's going through there, it's already, you know, can hit capacity pretty quickly. Does it require any sort of collection system that then goes through treatment?
So we will need to build, for lack of a better term, and Ted, come on up if you can help me. I think like rain gardens and bio swales and retention ponds, depending on how much runoff is running off a thing, there may be a requirement that a developer or a road project have those additional development side catchments to filter that stormwater before it goes into the groundwater or surface water.
Go ahead, please.
Actually, in the subdivision construction manual update that we enacted, we're already requiring retention ponds and such, so forth. We're not, we're not just allowing people to run the stormwater off the site anymore, really. I think yet to retain, what, 110% of the natural?
Vegetation, yeah.
Not vegetation, but. Not, not vegetation, but the, it's a runoff requirement for, I think, a, a tenure event. But I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I know I had to do a bunch of ponds.
I know a stormwater plan is part of the subdivision development process, depending on the size of the development, but I don't have the specifics.
This is Assemblyman Yonk, mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. Jesse's correct. The requirement's to keep all plus, plus some on site. So it's subdivision development-wise, we're, I don't think we're setting ourselves up for failure in the future. Just wanted to add that in, so, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Sumner?
Well, of course, that doesn't address all the subdivisions that were already constructed with no provision for that. So is this like a massive unfunded obligation, or how, how would that be addressed?
I think, getting to your question, that's why we need to map all the illicit discharge, which I'm not quite sure that process. So we are identifying the areas that may be from an old development that has stormwater running off it, and we need to come up with a plan for how we're going to deal with it or address it. I, I, there may be grandfather rights, but I don't, I haven't dug in deep enough to the permit requirements and what is acceptable compliance. So no, that answer.
Ms. Nowers?
Just on a non-stormwater question. The, I'm assuming just the long-range transportation plan also looks at the community transit, so that we're trying to, it's so much easier to keep cars off the road in the first place. But on the, the community transit, and I have one other question on a different topic, the community transit, I know in Anchorage you can actually track the ride that's coming to you, the buses, you can look at an app and see where you're at. So I was kind of curious on community transit, if we're looking at all. So not only do people have a one-stop call, but they can also see, you know, is my ride, kind of Uber-ish? Is it almost here?
I'm looking to Adam to know if he remembers that from, we had to create an equity and accessibility plan to support the one-call, one-click coordinated dispatch. And I wa, I was looking to see if that was part of it. I don't know that it is. I don't know for that, were that sophisticated. I don't know if Moki, yeah, if you would want to address that. We can, okay. All right.
Can it come in with the one call?
It will come in, okay, great. So yeah, with the new dispatch center, we'll be able to track the buses. Thank you.
Very cool. I just had a, a couple other topics I was just curious about. On the, I know we have an infrastructure kind of wishlist coming before us as an assembly, and just as part of the Arctic Winter Games, are we looking at any infrastructure that we may want to include if those funds become available? And maybe we don't know those projects yet, but?
So for potential infrastructure for the Arctic Winter Games, the two facilities, well, parking is an issue facility-wide, and trying to make a plan for how we're going to accommodate getting all the athletes to the facilities and then deal with spectators. So that's in the works. We may need some additional parking lots or parking areas in addition to shuttle service for some of the games. We are looking at, we're having conversations about the biathlon facility. We don't have one of those in the borough. It's possible that we could use Anchorage. But we are talking with Land Management and the Matsui Ski Club, and folks from the Biathlon Association and DNR about, could we have a biathlon facility up at GPRA? And does the land management plan that the state approved that's ours, will it allow for the biathlon to be sited where they want it, which is near the chalet? So that's kind of still being discussed. We're not sure. We haven't gotten any preliminary cost estimates, or reached out to the community to see if anyone's willing to support, like, earthwork, like, in kind. So, and then we would need a management agreement for the future, because the borough doesn't have the resources at this time to manage and maintain a biathlon facility. So we would need to have a partner show up to be able to do that, and pick up the bullets and maintain, you know, all the shooting positions and whatnot. So it's being discussed. The other topic is, and, and we've talked a little bit more about biathlon with the players, is the potential for using the Arctic Winter Games as leverage to get the additional chairlift up at Ski Talk. And so that is kind of out there. We've talked with the Ski Talk board a little bit. They're enthusiastic. They already have the plans for it. But it took so long to get the board seated, and now the, getting the board up to speed on the Arctic Winter Games and what their responsibility is. We had to pause a little bit on digging in on potential facility needs and plans. But I assume we'll pick that up soon. With that, we have to get permission from the International Committee about which sports we can actually host. Dog mushing is being talked about in addition to biathlon and downhill ski. So they have to, like, again, check all our facilities, make sure we really have everything we need to host those specific sports, and then approve the set suite of games. And so that's kind of in the works as well. So we would need that before we continued to, to talk about plans and fundraising and budgets. And lastly, with Arctic Winter Games, we still are also looking at legacy projects. Not that biathlon and additional chairlift at Ski Talk wouldn't be a, a legacy project, but we, we want to talk about winter city legacy projects. So what is it, what would it, might it look like in the core area if we had more winter activities? And I can get more into that later, but we are trying to form a subcommittee to look at walkability, fire pits, and snowshoe rentals, and lit ice skating rinks, and food vendors, and night markets, and other things that might live on past the Arctic Winter Games that our community can continue to enjoy, if you're not a downhill skier or a biathlon person, but you're in town, and it's winter and dark, and you still want to have access to outdoor activities.
I just have two last questions. The safe routes to schools, which I think is great, but it, it seems like it's reactive. Like, we should have had those in place when schools are going in. So I was curious if with the, I know we have three, I think, three site selections coming before us. Do we have something in place now so that we actually put the routes in as we're putting the schools in? And then just, if people want to be part of that planning quarterly newsletter and sign up, could you send us a link so we can share that with folks?
Yes to the newsletter. And I, if, Adam, if you want to speak to the, how we're thinking of the future of school walking routes, and then those schools?
Yeah, so that, that is one of the, the biggest points, is that ideally, schools should be built in places that are already suitable for them as well as possible. And so we tried to do a better job with this site selection of factoring that in, at least thinking about it, and including it in the process for how we go through and, and look at the different sites, particularly since I, I work on both of those things. And so the, the three schools, though, in this particular site selection process, are all not neighborhood schools. They're, it's Matsui Central, which is a homeschool-type program, and then two charter schools. So for this one, the, that particular factor wasn't weighted as heavily as it would be if it was, say, in a local elementary school. So, but we are looking at it when considering the different sites.
So when we're doing the school, we're building it, do we have funding in there for ensuring there's safe routes for those kids to get to schools? Or is that something you're just identifying as a need and for these schools that are coming up? Do we have it in place?
Somewhat. So the one thing that wasn't looked at before, and it's partly because of the funding systems, was sort of off-site improvements generally. So that includes roads and walkability features. It, it is more so included now, with, in some of the assessments that we've done, they've considered it. And so there is a little bit of an allocation for those off-site improvements. I don't necessarily know if there's specifics for, off the top of my head, for walkability.
Thank you. We have been having conversations internally, because kids should be able to walk to school. Like, that needs to be a priority. Also, right now, the bus system is shut down. So now parents are driving kids to school that should have been bused, and there's four hundred people trying to get out of the drop-off point. So we are not going to miss that mark anymore. Bussing service may change forever. COVID might not go away. We might get to a place where individual bus routes for every neighborhood isn't a thing anymore. So we're talking about, as we develop these new, like, the borough, Land Management and Planning has identified areas where we think new schools are going to need to be. And so there has been a conversation internally. We, of course, haven't brought it to you yet. Like, is there a way we could buffer a new school site? And there might be a different requirement for neighborhoods within that one mile or mile and a half buffer zone, so that the road, those neighborhood roads have to be built to a different standard to accommodate walkability and safety. So that's some of where we're thinking about the future. But of course, we haven't got there yet. We have, we don't have, what would a code change look like? What would the, a change to the subdivision construction manual look like, specific to school skites? But we are trying to figure out, it does seem like a band-aid to go back and look at the forty-seven schools we already have and say, whoops, we didn't accommodate kids. Like, we didn't make sure it was safe for them to get to school. Some of them live right across the street, and it's not safe for them to cross the street. So we're going to do a better job moving forward. And as Adam said, we haven't had a lot of new schools show up, or, or the need for, and to reenact the school site selection committee. The current ones are charter schools, so that, but as we get new schools, permanent schools, the need is brought forward, we will have that conversation, it'll be part of the criteria, is, is walkability an issue? How, are we asking for enough funding to provide for those, those infrastructure needs, those safety needs? But we haven't had the opportunity yet.
Thank you. And we don't have to, I, this is going to come up on Tuesday, so I assume that can be part of the discussion we can get into then.
Other questions? Mr. Two?
I have a question, but I have a statement. I believe that Neil Moss, he's trying at his shooting range out there in the McInnich area. I believe he's putting a biathlon deal together there.
Okay. Someone, thank you. We'll talk to him.
Okay. Any, anybody else? Commissioners on the telephone? Any questions or comments for the planning staff? Maybe they're not here with us anymore. Okay, nothing else? Nothing further? Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. And thank you, all you planners. We had Mr. Ortiz and Adam Bradway, thank you, and Ted Ishide, and, and we appreciate it.
We really like our job, and we want, yeah, we want to do good work.
So what is the cost of, like, this, this upper ski, if, if you're going to do an addition like that? What is, what is, just give us a ballpark cost?
Somewhere between five and ten million.
Okay. Go ahead, sit down, please.
Just kidding. Okay, so I guess the next thing on the agenda is go to comments. So, Madam Chair, why don't you start out with your commissioners, please?
Commissioner Musannan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thanks to the staff. That was a fantastic presentation. And also wishing Alex Strawn and his family a lot of warm wishes as well. So that's it for me. Thank you all.
Commissioner Chesprill?
I have to agree with Commissioner Musannan that, that it's, what, a wonderful presentation, and it's impressive how well organized and straightforward is the planning department. They're doing wondrous works. I also would agree with him that, that I send my, my best and hopes and wishes to the Strawn family at this time. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and Chairwoman Vague for your service. We really will miss you. Thank you.
Commissioner Eldon?
I too think it was a great presentation. You guys get along really good, and it's, it looks like a very cohesive group that's very effective.
I, I didn't ask any questions, because I also just have a comment to make, and that has to do with the schools. For people who don't know, I'm raising my grandson, and so I get to drop him off at Cottonwood Creek Elementary. And very poor planning from beginning until now. So I do have a certain level of frustration that sewer and meridian has not been upgraded between Pawawah and Bogard, and that, some, some kid's going to get killed there. That's just, that's just a statement of fact, that that right now has become such a problem. And again, the school bus system isn't actually shut down, but they do, to no fault of COVID, had not enough people who applied for the bus job driver position. And so they're short of bus drivers. And then a rotating schedule, one day a week, every school doesn't have bus routes. And so, yes, you have every child in the school that's going in and out via private vehicle. And at Cottonwood Creek, it happens to be a death trap, because you've got those two lights, the timing, you've got, you know, the F six fifty extended limousine cab that requires an extension ladder to get in and out of, that you're trying to find a way to look around. It's, it's a disaster waiting to happen. And a walking lane, a walking path is not going to help. That road needs to be done. And it's, I've asked now two years in a row for this stip on that, and I keep getting told, oh, yeah, it's out there, it's out there, it's out there. I know the money has been put out there, and it's been there for years. But that road is still not fixed. And I don't know if it's going to take a kid, the parent of a kid, or a whole family to die. But that road has to be fixed, and it needs to be the top of a stip list. With that, yes, this is my last meeting, and, with the Planning Commission, and, not the Planning Commission, with the Assembly and Mr. Mayor. And the Planning Commission got you some flowers in appreciation for all that you do on your last meeting. You've just, you know, making a haul in the flowers today. I have enjoyed working with Matsui Borough, and I think there's a lot of really great things happening. And I, again, I've enjoyed watching the rotating door of planners over the past six years, since none of you were there when I started. But I know you all work hard. I, I know that, especially with the short staffing, and now in the last couple years with the COVID, we ask a lot, we get a lot more back. So I really do appreciate all of that. And of course, our hearts go out to the Strawn family. And when your kids are hurt, nothing, there's nothing worse. I know that. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm done.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with our Assembly members. So, Mr. Yonk, you're telephonic. Why don't you lead out with comments, please?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, awesome presentation. I really appreciate it. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. We had prior plans. I want to kind of build on what Jesse said earlier with the unfunded liabilities. And, and I know Manager Brown will do a great job in the future of keeping us posted on this. But if we're asking our taxpayers to, you know, to chase down one, three, five million dollars in federal grants, but we're going to turn around and add a zero to that on what we spend to get there, that'd be pretty worrisome. So I want to take that into consideration moving forward. Everything else was amazing, though. I appreciate it. Just have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Nowers, comments?
Thank you. I was going to make some comment about the story of narcissus and folks being given narcissus flowers. But, so hopefully you enjoy your reflection. Just want to say thank you to the staff. Your enthusiasm late in the evening for what is difficult topics is so appreciated. So thank you. And then also, I will see Assemblymember McKee and the mayor again. But to Chairwoman Vague, I've known you for a while, and have always been impressed with your depth of knowledge and your willingness to, to talk about the difficult issues. So I wish you well, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Sumner, comments?
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for the presentation. It sounds like there's a lot of work ahead. And I don't think it could be in better hands. And I'm glad to see that DEC is studying the relocation of the Butte Air Quality Monitor. I think that was pretty contentious. There were some neighbors out there that, yeah, had some issues. And yeah, that, it's good that they're, they're putting some money towards studying that. And, you know, prayers go out to Alex Strawn and his family, and I, you know, I hope for the best for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKee, comments tonight?
Excellent presentations. The only question I have in my mind is where the money comes from to implement a lot of it.
Hey, Mr. Two?
Hi. Great presentations. Thanks for looking in the future. And thank you.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. And I don't think anybody in this room could be any more happier about the DEC studying. be any more happier about the DEC studying, moving in the air quality monitor in my, in my neighborhood over there. So, but great presentation. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bovee?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the planning department staff for the presentation and for staffing all of these advisory boards. They are so important to the whole public process. And I'd like to thank Chairwoman Vague and Commissioner Anderson for all your years of service.
Well, thank you very much for the, for the flowers, Planning Commissioner. Really, it means a lot to me. I'm kind of a flower guy and especially the narcissus, Ms. Nowers. And, you know, I think it was right around 15 years ago I first got on the Planning Commission. Betty Viers was the Assemblywoman from District Seven. And I was always yelling and complaining at her. She was the Assemblywoman about everything wrong with the borough. And she said, I'm putting you on the Planning Commission. And that's, and that's kind of straightened me right out. And, but it's been, it's been a great, many years with, with the Planning Commission and all the valuable things that the, our planners with the Matsui Borough do and, and watching the borough grow and grow and grow. And that seems to be the trend we're, we're still in and gonna be in for a while. We seem to be the part of the state of Alaska that has that growth trend. And I, I'm very, I'm very appreciative that the Assembly and the borough staff took on the Arctic Winter Games for 2024. I know it's a huge project, but I'm sure it's gonna have great benefits to the borough and to the whole state of Alaska. So thank you for doing that extra work. And so it, it's a little bit of regret tonight. This is my last Planning Commission Assembly meeting. But as the years go by, it's, it's time to let somebody else step in here and, and have a new mayor. And I, I'm sure there'll be a couple new Planning Commissioners. And I think the few Assemblymembers that have, will have an open seat, you know, we like to hear your, your thoughts on, on, on the nominees that you want to get forward, brought forward and, and to keep the Planning Commission going in the right direction. And so I'll just say, good night to everybody and thank you, everybody, for everything you've done for the borough and, and, and the mayor's office over the many years. So with that, we will recess or adjourn at, what do you think, seven thirty, 7:28 PM?